But just like headaches are a real thing, but having a headache doesn't explain what caused it. Similarly, dementia is a condition that has a lot of different causes. The main cause of dementia is a brain disease called Alzheimer's disease. The vast majority of all cases of dementia come from Alzheimer's. It's a physical disease. The brain, as those ugly photos show, a person with dementia, their brain has shrunk. The point there is that Alzheimer's is a physical disease of the brain. It is not behavior. It's not psychological. It is a person is dealing with a brain that is dying. You can't talk a person out of dementia. It is as much a physical disease as kidney disease. But why am I bothered talking about this? How big a problem is dementia? Seven point two million Americans are living with Alzheimer's from the numbers. That's 2% of the American population. I don't know your exact demographics, but I'm gonna venture that your city has roughly 2% of its residents dealing with dementia. When you count the family caregivers, like I was for seventeen years for my wife, when you count the caregivers, you get about 5% of your population are dealing with dementia one way or another. That's a non-trivial number. Most people who are living with Alzheimer's are over sixty-five. That's not to say that most people over sixty-five have Alzheimer's, but one out of nine people over sixty-five have Alzheimer's. Not everyone with Alzheimer's is older. Some people, one in twenty persons with Alzheimer's are under sixty-five. In my wife's case, she developed Alzheimer's at age fifty-seven. So it's not always old people. And the problem's gonna get worse because of me. And the seventy-five million other baby boomers that are standing behind me. In fact, today, eleven thousand baby boomers celebrate their sixty-fifth birthday. And tomorrow, eleven thousand more baby boomers will celebrate their sixty-fifth birthday. The problem is going to get worse. The Alzheimer's journey typically lasts about ten years. In my wife's case, it lasted seventeen years. Most people with Alzheimer's are not in a nursing home. They're not in a long-term care facility. Most people with Alzheimer's are out in the community, trying to participate in the life of the community. And about fifteen percent of them are living with Alzheimer's alone, without any help whatsoever. The kinds of difficulties that a person with Alzheimer's has, it runs the gamut. In fact, we have a whole hour-long class about difficulties. But the classic one, the classic one is short-term memory. A person with Alzheimer's cannot remember what just happened. So they will ask you the same question over and over. They will tell you the same thing over and over. It is not because they're not paying attention. They're doing the best they can with broken equipment. They have a lot of other difficulties. They get lost. They get confused. They can't make a choice. And we're not talking about buying a house or buying power. We're talking about what to order from the menu. We're talking about having difficulty with alien technology, like E-six. Difficulty with space and time, being out of time, thinking it is still nineteen ninety-five. People having difficulty with not understanding what a reflection is. Not understanding how to deal with social situations, which is to say they lose their social filters. A whole range of difficulties a person with dementia can have in the community. So because of that, there is an organization, a nonprofit, Dementia Friendly America, not a federal agency. They sponsor this program called Dementia Friendly Communities. When I last looked, there were four hundred dementia-friendly communities around the country. Three of them are in Michigan. One of our objectives is to increase that number and help Michigan catch up to the rest of the country in having dementia-friendly communities. And that involves the entire community, the local government, the business sector, the healthcare, the faith community, and the general public. Let me explain that some more. What is a dementia-friendly community? A dementia-friendly community is simply one where people walk towards a person with dementia instead of away from them. That's what a dementia-friendly community is. How to be a dementia-friendly community? Be dementia-friendly. Learn about the kinds of difficulties that I just spent thirty seconds discussing. And then learn the very simple techniques to help interact with a person with dementia in the public. For example, instead of correcting them if they say something wrong, you kiss. Keep it short, simple, and slow. Some of you thought I was gonna say something different there. Keep it short, simple, and slow so that they can easily understand what you're trying to communicate to. Help them out in the store. If they ask you in the grocery store, "I'm looking for the tomato paste," don't tell them it's on aisle seventy-eight. Take them to aisle seventy-eight. Help them find it. Overall approach, focusing on connecting instead of correcting. Connecting instead of confronting. Basically, simple ideas. It just takes a little while to get the hang of it. And what we try to do is we try to raise the awareness about dementia in the public. One very good effective technique that we used down in Celine was we ran a series of lectures, evening lectures, weekday lectures. We did it in a church social hall. We could've done it in a library. About dementia with the theme, "It's a disease." It's not a disgrace. It's no more disgraceful to have Alzheimer's than it is to have kidney disease. It's a terrible thing, but it's not a disgrace. So we educate the public. We also offer workshops, forty-five-minute workshops, to any kind of a business, organization, you know, stores, service organizations, churches, about how to be dementia-friendly, which is, as I said, knowing what the difficulties are and how to interact with people. We also offer social events for people living with dementia and their care partners. A memory cafe, there's some flyers outside. Memory cafe is an afternoon social event. A dementia-friendly movie where people with dementia and their care partners can go and have a good time and not feel that they're going to be embarrassed because everybody else in the theater is also on the dementia journey. Who should be dementia-friendly? You name it. Any person, any organization that has any dealings with the public ought to be dementia-friendly. Some examples, there's a lot more examples in the handout. The city government, that is the municipal workforce of the city of Celine there. Restaurants, helping people make decisions, like choosing from the menu, helping them out, not rushing them, letting them take their time. Stores can be dementia-friendly. A lot of other organizations, more examples in the handout. But why? Why should a community be dementia-friendly? It's the right thing to do, but also it enables residents to participate in the life of the community. To go out and shop, to go out and dine, and spend the money that they want to spend. Instead of doing, instead of spending it on Amazon, spend it downtown. Instead of ordering, instead of just doing, you know, takeout. Going out to the restaurant, the local restaurant, for goodness sakes. Most businesses find that being dementia-friendly not only increases their business from the people living with dementia who are now coming out and patronizing them, but when they get to show a window claim that says, "We are dementia-friendly," many other people will say, "Oh, I'm gonna go to that place. I'm gonna shop there. I'm gonna eat there," because of their community-mindedness. This has been true in the city of Celine. It is also welcome publicity. We've got a lot of publicity down in Celine. It came to us. I didn't cause any of this. We've had many reporters come and do stories on the events that we sponsor. And Mayor Marl, I don't know if you know Brian Marl, mayor, he has been grateful that we have brought some good publicity to Celine and to him for his support on this program beginning five or six years ago. Local government doesn't have to lead this effort, but it would be good if it supported it. Now, some local governments, among the four hundred, some local governments take the lead. And that's great, but that's not a prerequisite. Just to be in some way supportive of another organization, like a senior center or a chamber of commerce, taking the lead to educate the public and set up some dementia-friendly activities. It's not, if you look at Dementia Friendly America, they have a lot of good guidance. If you follow their guidance, you're gonna end up hiring somebody to be a full-time dementia-friendly community organizer. You don't need to do that. You don't need to do that. You just need someone to spend a few hours. It is not, it's important, but it's not necessarily a big deal. Because, in our way of looking at it, which has been successful, it's more important to be dementia-friendly than to be planning how to be dementia-friendly someday. The plan is not nearly as important as the doing. Be dementia-friendly. Eventually, as you've gotten more and more organizations, stores, churches, what have you, as more and more people have gotten to be, learning how to be dementia-friendly, then, yeah, eventually, either the city government or the senior center or somebody will put together a five-page plan that documents our dementia-friendliness. And you'll send it into Dementia Friendly America, and they'll come back and say, "Okay, you are now the fourth or the fifth or the sixth dementia-friendly community in Michigan." That would be nice, but it would be much more important to be dementia-friendly first. And we, Dementia Friendly Services, we are happy to help anyone, anywhere. I'm happy to come up here to Linden. Yesterday, I was in Alpena. Next week, I'll be in Tassie. We will go anywhere that anybody invites us to come and talk in more detail about how to be dementia-friendly, about the difficulties that people with dementia have. We are ready to help. We hope that we can stimulate greater dementia-friendliness, dementia-friendly communities everywhere in Michigan. And with that, thank you so much for the opportunity to talk. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Don't just stay right there for just a quick second in case council has any questions. First, I wanna ask, do any residents have any questions about this topic? Councilwoman Simons, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to thank you for coming. You're talking about kindness and civility. And it's something that we all were kind of, we have so many wonderful people in our community. Would it be hard to push a little further and employ this type of behavior, remind people how important it is?
Frankly, it glorifies common sense. In our experience in talking to stores and stuff, once we explain, for example, that behavior of asking the same question over and over, once we explain, it's the disease. It's not that they're not paying attention. Most of the time, with that similar attempt, most people say, "Oh, okay. How can I help?" And I believe that it would certainly be true here in the...
Thank you again.
Councilwoman Miller?
I really like the program. And we have a lot of seniors in this area that do have this. Again, like Brenda was saying, that we have just kindness and awareness. And this facility, Tassie, and the positive ladies there are targeted. I think this is the perfect place, and this is the perfect community because we all do care, and we all try and do the best we can. So I think this is pretty good, and thank you for bringing it to us.
You're very welcome.
Councilwoman X?
Yes, thank you for coming. And we just went through this as a family. It was quite quickly there as it progressed. Left a lot of questions, so this may give some answers to the first question. So it is great progression. Thank you.
I'm sorry to hear about your journey. Happy to help in any way that we can with information and ideas.
Councilwoman Towns?
Yes, so on our journey, if we become a dementia-friendly community, how do we achieve that status? Do we need to, are you asking us to pass, okay, so?
In fact, thank you for that question. Mayor Marl and his city council down in Celine made the choice early on to help stimulate the interest. They passed a resolution. Yes, they did, making the city of Celine government dementia-friendly. And then they immediately followed through on that and asked me and my colleagues to come and do a one-hour workshop about how to be dementia-friendly, to the municipal workforce. And we did that. We were happy to do it. So yes, if you walk into the city hall of Celine now, you will be encountering someone who has gotten this intensive forty-five-minute training in how to be dementia-friendly. So yes, if you were to choose to do that, I think it would be great, but it's not like a prerequisite for the community learning how to be dementia-friendly. It would help, I think.
That's all. Councilwoman, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming up and presenting, as I do. This runs in my family and is a concern. I guess you've kind of answered the question as far as the city, but I guess at the same time, if you were to come back in, could you obviously give direction, like, okay, for businesses, and here's some things that they can do and give examples of how, you know, how we can pass it on to some of the businesses and the community?
I would be happy to come back and talk to, you know, one organization at a time or a group of organizations. For example, talking to a bank, I will talk mostly about financial issues. Talking to a store, talking about not just the example of how people find things, but also the idea of paying for things. It happens that a person with dementia sometimes will neglect to pay, and they'll walk out simply because, well, they were embarrassed because they didn't know how to use that new family technology. So, and of course, the store owner will get upset justifiably. And we ask folks to just try to cut them some slack. Don't escalate the situation immediately because most likely, they're not trying to steal. They just got confused, things like that. And they're happy to come up and talk to any organizations and do the best we can to scale it to their particular issues and needs. So yeah, love to come back anytime.
Thank you.
So I met you at the Michigan Association for Mayors Conference, and I have been very, very excited about bringing this here, at least bringing it for people to hear and explore the possibilities. I had two grandparents that had Alzheimer's, and so I have seen firsthand what some of the tough choices for families, but also the community and how that can impact the community. And so I have just a couple of quick questions. Is the forty-five minutes as long as it takes to be trained for becoming a dementia-friendly city? And then is there anything that continues after that? Or is it just?
Basically, just about forty-five minutes or so to talk to people about what dementia is, the difficulties people have, and easy ways to help. So it's a matter of just spreading that as broadly throughout the community, throughout the different sectors of the community as possible. And that move, really.
You answered the other one that I have. So I guess the next question that I have, and I'm hoping this is okay, I'd like to see if they're, and not promotional, what have you. Are any council members interested in bringing this back for conversation to the next work session?
Yes, there is.
Yes.
Kristin, can we get on our next meeting work session, please?
Do you think we have?
Madam Mayor?
We don't have a work session.
Do you?
Oh, I don't remember that session.
We'll go for December or just one meeting so we could plan for a sleep year. That would be, or we could, that would work out.
Is that what, okay. That way we can discuss it. I just wanted everybody to have an opportunity to...
Are you wanting to come back as a training and work session though? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, that's up to council. That's council's pleasure. I would imagine we need to vote on that.
Yeah, ultimately, it's a decision. I thought that's what you were...
No, it was to come back after they had gotten a chance to digest, to pack it, and do a little more research. That's what I was...
Madam Mayor, perhaps we could talk about it in our next work session in January and then have a special, this forty-five minutes, that would probably make for a really long meeting. Maybe we could have a special meeting or a special, and then invite community?
I think that'd be the best way to end up. Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, any questions?
Absolutely.
So have you presented this in kind of any chief's associations or anything like that? Not, no chief, not in front of any associations like that. Some individual first responders in various places. But no, not at the association.
I can get your contact number.
I'd love to.
And I'll get you on our agenda there. Rich, NC County Chiefs Association. And I think it'd be a great idea to get him in front of Pro Linden as well. And Alamein.
And the fire department.
Linden Municipal Association and stuff like that.
Whatever you're saying, company and...
Yeah. I just see this as treating it like people on the spectrum as well. We do the same thing with people on the spectrum as well. And we don't do it with people with dementia. And our officers do, and they've gone through some training that kind of touched on it a little bit. So, but I think it's fantastic just to educate our public in general.
Absolutely.
I mean, it seems everybody's in favor of it. And I don't know if this is something that will be set up through, say, Allen as far as with the police department, the fire department, DPW, whoever's interacting with the public ourselves. But I would say that if everybody's in favor of it, to go ahead and maybe get a training section set up and start the process, unless anybody disagrees.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to see DDA get this, because I think the training for DDA and us being able to spot as residents someone walking down the street to recognize, are they walking down the street because they want to walk down the street or could they be lost? And know how to approach them, how to scare them. I think everyone's touched and had family members that have this, and it's delicate. And I think the more people in our community that can learn about how to do this would be wonderful.
Madam Mayor, if you're open, we'll just work with Jim to get something scheduled and tailor it to each of the needs of the various boards or staff and things like that. So we can work on getting that stuff.
Okay. So do we need to, do we, no votes needed to?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's... I mean, like, you guys, I already see one of them. I've always done this to inform them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right, we have no correspondence this evening. So we are gonna be listening for public comment.
I'm Warner, and I live at one side to West Olson. Thank you for the opportunity to hopefully go forward with this dementia-friendly community. It's very personal to me, and so thank you. So tonight, I wanted to put out there, the American Legion has got a busy few weeks here, and so wanted to touch on what we've got going. So we're gonna be at the happening of the Zombies, Scare Girls, Monsters event. And we're giving out some special, special things. We've got some airplane, candy airplane kits that I put together and, you know, little bit of history there with the military. We also will be rounding up our bouncing eyeball rattle. And that'll be on the eighteenth for the drawing. And the funds for that are for scholarship programs, like to rural state, different community events, first responder supports. And then we also, so next month, November, is the Veterans Month. I'm gonna call it that. So we have a veterans appreciation project that we're doing. We're doing signs, signs, yard signs to show the veterans that they're appreciated. And we are, hopefully, we're trying to map it out where we can do like a tour so the veterans can see, you know, the community support for that. The signs are ten dollars. And then we have blue and red ribbons. Maybe you don't want to put a sign in the yard, but you want to put a ribbon around the oak oak tree if you will. We have those in blue and red, and those are five dollars. I can deliver those if need be, so, you know, just let me know. And this is kind of leading up to our appreciation dinner, November seventh, in the Simon Temple. The veteran and one guest have a free sit-down meal, and there's no charge for that. And so we hope we can, you know, kind of tie that in. So when they're on their way to the dinner, they can go, wow, you know, and really appreciate us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further residents that have any public comments? Seeing that, we don't move on to the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Miller?
Yes.
X?
Yes.
Simons?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Carter?
We have two items tonight under business items. Resolution number eighteen dash twenty-five, approval of Michigan Department of Transportation MDOT agreement.
Yes, Madam Mayor and City Council. So this evening, as you just said, we do have business items. We typically don't do those at work sessions, but these two projects are a little bit sensitive with the grant dollars that are on the table with them. Both of the business items are tied to grants. Specifically, the resolution eighty-five is for our Broad Street tip project. And so this is something that MDOT is requiring of us, and so we're happy to field any questions that you might have on it.
Councilwoman Simons? No questions. I'm right there.
If you have any questions, say so. Thank you.
No questions.
Oh, good. And I have none either.
Just an approval of resolution eighteen twenty-five.
Is there a motion?
I will make a motion.
Oh, so...
an accessible and safe viewing area up at the top of the gazebo, draw a blank on the term now, but the area at the very top where it's accessible for strollers, wheelchairs, you know, people that may want, may not want to navigate the stairs. So what it is, essentially, is an extension of the sidewalk into the amphitheater area, and then it has a railing around it too, so that people are safe there. And it's been a long time coming. Luckily, we were able to receive a grant and did it completed, and so we're excited to move forward with it.
Thank you. Councilman Link, any questions?
No.
Councilwoman Allen?
No.
Ms. McHale?
Nope.
Councilwoman Miller?
I am excited that this is coming. I think it's the best thing ever. I see people down there at the mill, listen to music, and, you know, they're way in the back, in the wheelchairs or walkers or strollers, and they can't navigate down there without maybe harms, so this is great timing. Thank you.
So there will be a ramp?
So, so this is a viewing platform that's at the top, basically at the parking lot level, and it extends and widens the sidewalk into sort of a, a deck area that's, that has a railing around the top.
So to get out there, they come from the sidewalk?
They'll come from the sidewalk. They're centered on the stage in the amphitheater.
Okay. Fairly so.
I am very excited about this project. Very excited. Do any of the residents have any questions? Seeing none.
So, can I move, I'd like to move to approve the Linden gazebo sidewalk reconstruction project and award a project, MDT construction, the amount of thirteen thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-four cents.
Support?
Support.
Link?
Yes.
X?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Simons?
Yes.
Yes. All right.
We're going to move on now to discussion items. Discussion items, consideration for renewal of conditional zoning request for G10 Street.
Madam Mayor, City Council, so the applicant who is present this evening has requested that City Council reconsider the vote with the full board on for the conditional zoning of G10 Street. As you guys all are aware, at the last vote, we didn't have a full board, it's a tie vote, it's available, so that is up to your best consideration to be done. Obviously, we do not have a full board again this evening, but I, I can certainly let Pat speak to the specifics on what your potential options are for that, but my understanding is she could decide to place that on the next council agenda for reconsideration.
I can speak to that for a second. It's not literally reconsideration.
Sorry.
It is looking at the issue as a renewed action on the request that was already made. It's different than saying, we decided we want to change our mind from what we did last time, which is something we would normally do at an earlier meeting, but this would be saying, it didn't pass last time, wasn't defeated, but it didn't pass, it didn't get the majority. But we as a board would like to allow a second motion, a renewed motion, not a reconsideration, a renewed motion to look at again. And having a full board, we want reason to do that. So that is what we're really going to be talking about now. So you wouldn't take action tonight to reconsider what you did last time, which would be either tonight or at a future meeting determining that you're going to redo your motion.
I also think that it might be an idea, Jerry, you had a specific question about the overall, but maybe while Pat's present tonight, to ask her a question in regards to some of the stuff, so maybe, maybe while it's on the agenda for discussion, we might be able to discuss that, so maybe if there's any questions, any clarification on it, so.
All right. We're going to start with Councilman Hacks.
I'd like to have time to rework that. They're just bringing it back, they're bringing the same thing back to the end that was warranted originally, correct? It's not being changed or anything?
Councilor?
I would like to see it come back to the full board for consideration.
I agree with that, yes.
Thank you.
Well, I think it's, that since everybody seems to be in favor of bringing back the renewed motion, I just think we should be cautious about bringing back items for a second vote when they would turn down the first time.
That is something to be considered.
Absolutely.
I really don't, I'm not really, no, I'm not 100% sure.
We, we have a forum.
That we, even with the quorum, that we shouldn't be bringing back things we've already talked about and voted on before, because that sets a bad precedent, doesn't it? Doesn't it? And everybody's going to start hitting on the van while you're bringing stuff back. Or maybe not, I don't know.
Maybe people who come back who are confused and say, hey, but.
Yeah.
It doesn't set the precedent.
Okay, okay. But what I'm concerned is that it's going to clog up our dots of getting to things that we really should be getting to by talking about things that we've already not, that we've already not approved in the past.
Well, I think the uniqueness of this was whether there was a tie, so by default there was a tie, so I think that's, that's a unique circumstance.
Yeah, I would agree to that. I just, just like I said, I'm just cautioning, I don't think we should have it doing it a lot of the time.
Which is okay.
Councilman Link?
I completely agree with what Pam's saying. It's something that we have to be cautious of, but at the same time, it was a three to three vote, so I guess technically it wasn't defeated, but nor did it, you know, because it was a tie, it was, but it was not defeated by the majority. Am I correct?
I think you're correct. I've never looked at it. I'm not sure that even if it's been defeated six to one, that you wouldn't have the authority to relook at it. So part of the reasoning behind this, and Mike just talked to me about this, is that you always have the right to take actions, and the fact you took action somewhere tonight doesn't mean you can't next year, the year after, the year after, take a different action. Maybe it's a different board, they still have the authority to take that action. You don't bind yourself by any one.
So I think it's something I, I would like to see brought up again, you know, more information, more research. I know I spoke to you a little bit, Pat, at the beginning of, before the meeting, and wanting to see more clarification on what the, my concerns as far as setting precedents is for other houses wanting to say, hey, I'd like to create, I'd like to turn my house into duplex, and, you know, and, you know, we have zoning in place for a reason, but, you know, your explanation, and if you could maybe give the same explanation you'd given me on that concern, maybe it would help, you know, some of the other members.
What I told you before the meeting is that you don't really set a precedent by doing conditional zoning. It's a zoning contract as such. For a hundred years in the state of Michigan, you couldn't have contract zoning. Everybody who was in the judiciary, grew up, area contract zoning was illegal. Some years ago, ten or fifteen years ago, you changed that to some extent by allowing conditional zoning in certain situations. First of all, it has to be a condition that was proposed by the applicant. The city can't say, we zone, it's put on the other condition. This, it has to be a proposal brought forth by the applicant that we'd be willing to, and I'll give you an example, somebody comes in in the general business district, and they know that there are a lot of different allowable uses in the general district, and so if you're using the property to general business, even though they're coming in with a certain type of use, there are lots of uses that could be done, you have to look at every zone for all of those uses, and that'd be okay. If they came in and were willing to restrict this to just this use, and if you don't do this use, the zoning is going to stay back at what it was, if not general business, that's the kind of deal that you're allowed to make. Now, I'll go one further, which isn't exactly what you asked, but I think comes up, because I don't know where the details of this, but it's a duplex versus a single-family home situation. If the board, excuse me, if the council were to think that because of where this neighborhood is located, because of the whole grid, and things which apply to kind of all the homes, that maybe this isn't a bad use for that, and the way to do that is not to look at these individual homes at a time, it's going to change the zoning ordinance a lot better than to have two kitchens rather than just a.
Are there any further questions? Did I hear it correctly? It sounds like it was the majority. I'm happy.
So, Madam Mayor, what your suggestions for the next City Council meeting?
That was what you guys said.
Right.
Next up is material ordinance.
Madam Mayor, in front of you guys, we have a draft ordinance, Senator Yildar, et cetera, on for consideration. It's obviously just a special item, and I, I can let me speak to that specifically, Chief, if you don't mind?
Yeah. So, our last council meeting, exciting that we discussed this at this meeting today, and so I did a little bit of research actually, and I found that some jurisdictions adopted a ordinance for feeding deer, and I think it's a good first step in our situation here. The current ordinance, the current law, state law, is a misdemeanor. This would be a civil infraction. I think that's a, and we don't want to have this misdemeanor, obviously, and it would give us some teeth in the game here, or with the local, so I think it's a good one.
Do any residents have any questions? Ms. Warner?
So, in reading through it, it states about the bird feeders being four foot. I don't think that solves the bird feeder problem, whether the deer, you know, going to find their hind legs to take apples off my trees and things like that. I know, you know, birds, bird feeding is a, is a thing, but could it be suited? Would be less, you know, on the ground and attractive to the deer? Just.
Sound interesting. Thank you. Any further resident questions?
Yes, ma'am.
There was a case of chronic wasting disease diagnosed not too far away from here, so I think we really need to be careful about the deer getting their noses together to feed, and one thing that we noticed when we got a rock in is that there are acorns lying around every place, and the deer love acorns, and if people could be encouraged to clean up that stuff, it might keep the deer noses away from each other, so they won't spread the diseases.
I think it, that's a good point, and I think some education from us with this ordinance as well, putting it out to our public, also how to manage deer, different plants, et cetera. The DNR has some stuff we could post, and imagine stuff like that, kind of do a public education as well.
Councilman Link?
Yeah, like, the civil infraction, was it a hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Is that what I read? And I believe currently, the Michigan, the DNR, and talking with DNR officers, typically they don't go out looking for it, unless it's saying, back in the day, people would take a dump truck, put a dump truck of sugar meats or something else, and, and they don't go out if it's, if it's a minor fracture quite so much, but I believe their, their fine is anywhere from two hundred to five hundred, I believe, but, you know, that, then that's, I guess, you know, you've got to call the DNR, DNR, they, they don't have a lot of officers, they don't have a whole lot of officers, they cover a lot of territory, but, you know, I mean, that, that law is in place. I know that they will, out north, a lot of people get hit by it for aid purposes. I know people here do, because I've just kind of seen deer from my backyard, you know, in Chihuahua, these shores, you can see them traveling through the same areas, there's a reason they're all going to the same spot, because there's something to eat, eat, drink, and, and, yeah, that's their priorities, but I guess who, who enforces? Would it be?
We would, yeah.
Would it be the police department? Would it enforce it?
But we're not going to go into people's backyards and be, you know, knocking doors. I mean, that wouldn't be right, you know, we're not going to go, if we get a complaint, we, we will go investigate it and check it out, but I think education, putting out that it is now an ordinance, and putting on our Facebook if we're not, and that, that the reasons for doing this.
I mean, originally, my first instinct was, look, the DNR's got it, their fine is bigger, theirs is a misdemeanor, and I know, talking to DNR officers, they don't, a lot of them don't really want to enforce it, unless it's a gross, you know, infraction where somebody's got hundreds of pounds or something, but, yeah, I guess if this helps eliminate the deer problem, because I don't see any other solution that's viable, I mean, it would just be so expensive to get rid of the deer any other way. If there's no food, they'll go somewhere else.
Exactly.
So, all right, thanks, Chief.
Councilwoman Hough?
I think that the ordinance is a very good idea to help deal with some of the local concerns we have, and to help people understand more than anything, you know, that, that, as Ramona said, the nose-to-nose feeding is what spreads those germs, tuberculosis is next, and chronic wasting disease was just discovered in Gaines, so, I mean, what, that's nine to ten miles from us, about ten to the border, so I think this will go a long way to help, and I think that you're also right, Ramona, better maintenance of the yard, better yard care, but, I mean, every little, every little, it helps. I mean, I wish there was somewhere we could do some other things, but it's just not going to happen, because we truly don't have adequate areas.
That is part of the problem. The DNR mentioned it, actually. I talked to a biologist from DNR, actually, for this area, very large area, actually, so, and she said exactly that, so it is, it's, the houses are too close together, but, I mean, we can try to do something like this ordinance.
And those bird feeders are a super treat for these deer. I mean, I have the six-foot ones at the State Park Recommiss that you get, the platform ones, they just knock those over, just like, we don't bother feeding the birds as much as I'd love to. Thank you.
Yeah, I in particular really appreciate this, and my forty-two pets that like to come to my backyard, I hope they'll leave soon, so, but, and, and all honesty, it just gives you a little bit more leverage, and just kind of go against the door and saying, hey, listen, DNR's going to be called, you're going to say, listen, we'll let you know, and then this is the fine, right? If you can give them, I mean, it's not the only ordinance, but I think a warning.
I think that's the first, I mean, we don't want to, for our residents.
Right.
Have a warning, actually.
I like that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hough?
I think what you.
But, um, I mean, every little, every little, it helps. I mean, I wish there was somewhere we could do some other things, but it's just not going to happen because we truly don't have adequate areas.
I, that is part of, from the DNR mentioned infection. I talked to a biologist from DNR, actually, for this area, very large area, actually, so. Uh, and she said exactly that. So it is, it's, the houses are too close together, there's, but, I mean, we can try to do something like this ordinance.
And those bird feeders are a super treat for these deer. I mean, I have the six-foot ones at the State Park Recommiss that you get, the platform ones. They just knock those over, just like, we don't bother feeding the birds as much as I'd love to. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I in particular really appreciate this and my forty-two pets that like to come to my backyard. I, I hope they'll leave soon. So, but, and, and all honesty, it just gives you a little bit more leverage. And just kind of go against the door and saying, hey, listen, DNR is going to be called. You're going to say, listen, we like, you know, and then this is the fine.
Yep.
Right, if you can give them, I mean, it's not the only ordinance, but I think a warning.
I think that's the first, I mean, we don't want to, uh, for our residents.
Right.
Um, I've warned, actually.
I like that. Thank you.
I think what you proposed is a great way to handle it. Um, I know there's people with apple trees and they can't go out and get those apples every single time or the acorns, but it gives them more information of why are we have so many deer? I mean, I live downtown on Tigran Street, and I have a whole bunch that come in my yard, and they've left because there's nothing back there. My hostas are gone. So, um, that's a good way to, um, rid them if you just stop feeding them. Thank you.
My hostas look like celery sticks. It's a lie. They, they are eating stuff that they've never eaten before, so. I'm sure if you're looking at aluminum Christmas trees and stuff to put up, because they're just eating anything. The raccoons giving the apple trees, knocking apples down the floor. So at any point in time, you can look in front yard, back yards, or on the road, and you will see it here. Because of the construction, it's pushing back.
Yeah.
This will be a start, but it's going to be, we're still going to come up with this. Some other way we can do something about it.
Yeah, the DNR is going, they wish to permit for it, though. And there, there's a bunch of benchmarks that they had made for that, and, um, and just talking to her, they, I mean, it's going to be difficult.
Oh, yeah, definitely, because we've best friends.
Yeah.
My, my life, my life is mine.
Yeah.
I just want to thank you for your work and your concern and, and, and the calls that you've made and the time that you've spent. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
This is, this is, you spoke to.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I didn't want to say the, uh, opportunity. So I guess at this point, can we ask and be put on the agenda for the next session?
My second question.
Madam Mayor, just for clarification, uh, was everyone okay with the language, the change in?
Yes.
As, as.
It's nice and concise and straightforward.
Very reasonable.
Next is, um, item C, recording meetings.
So yes, Madam Mayor, Councilor, um, Councilman Serrano actually sent a request last week for this to be put on the agenda. And I don't have a ton that technically add to the discussion, um, because there's a lot of the puzzle pieces that we don't have the answers to, but you guys all know we're kind of in limbo right now with our, our setup as far as council goes. We don't have any permanent tests. Um, and, um, so when we had spoke, uh, in our loop session about recording the meetings, that was something that we were going to prioritize in line with our next budget process, as well as, uh, hopefully have the answers to where the permanent location for council would be. Um, and so I don't have those answers yet. We're working on them, um, and things. Um, so really, that's, that's all I have. I know that we have prioritized wanting to record meetings, um, and, uh, doing that again in line with the next budget. We talked about also, um, you know, the cost to do so. Um, once the city does make the decision to start recording the meetings and things like that and televising, it looks a little bit different than just any other general, you know, person doing that. Um, there's requirements that we have to meet with ADA accessibility and American disability, that, things like that. There's a storage of them. There's a lot of things that have to go into that, right? So, um, the equipment alone, I think the last quote that we had was about over sixty thousand dollars, um, and stuff. The money that we get from PEG funding and the money that we get from the, um, franchise fees is dwindling because more people are going to online streaming platforms, so they're not doing cable, right? So those fees look very different. Um, I think we captured roughly, I apologize, twenty-seven thousand dollars, roughly, in the, in the previous year, um, for PEG funding. That PEG funding is what we share with, uh, Fenn, uh, Lenden, Fenn schools, Heartland schools, for them to create content to put on the public education channel. Uh, we certainly can use some of that funding to do that, but with twenty-seven thousand dollars a year, um, it doesn't even, it's not even enough to cover, right? So we know, we, and when we discussed before, we knew that that was something that we were going to prioritize on the permanent budget. So, so really, that's where we're at. I know apparently you guys have been getting questions and stuff like that, and, you know, what would we answer? And that's, that's simply the answer. That's when I got a question about it, that's what I communicated, that's where we're at. There's items that we don't have answers to, that we've kind of got to get those answers to before we can actually put something on permanent, so. Because it is difficult for us, just setting up and tearing down tables every meeting, you know? Um, for every meeting that we have, zoning board, planning commission, uh, PDA, council, and those things and stuff. And obviously, there's a lot that we would need to do with technology to be able to do it effectively and properly. So, I don't think, I guess.
Are there any resident questions? Councilman.
No, just what you said, Ellen, makes total sense that, you know, if we don't have a permanent location, we don't have a permanent setup, it's really hard to work with, you know, setting up cameras when you don't know what you're going to be doing. So it's just something for us to think about and work on.
Councilman Lake.
Yeah, I, I guess, I, I, you know, looking at it, I don't understand the cost, uh, you know, that, that exclusive. I mean, I've seen your videos, and you're going with a cell phone. I can hear it, I understand it. So if you can do it with a cell phone, a lot of times, everybody that's here that's had a conference call or work, you have a unit, a, a microphone unit, that, that has better microphones than what you have on your cell phone. Um, multi-directional microphones for picking everybody up, you have that. You have the video camera that has to be plugged in, it's Wi-Fi, that can be hooked up to a laptop, and you can do a Zoom meeting. Uh, you do the M and L Zoom meetings, and, uh, everybody can be added to it. If any resident wants to see the council meeting, they log into the Zoom meeting. We just set the Zoom meeting up so that, you know, there's no comments allowed, and that everybody that's, uh, joining in as a participant in the Zoom meeting are muted. That way, there's no interruptions. And then, um, you know, I've, I've talked with Denise about this a little bit, and I've, I've talked with you, Madam Mayor, about it a little bit as well. Um, and then just maybe add to, uh, and, and, and some of this is not all this is discussions I've had with Denise as well, but maybe in your opening statement, say, hey, you know, if we chose to go down this path, um, your opening statement's like, look, if you have any questions, you know, email, you know, the city, uh, and those questions will be answered. You know, there will be no questions accepted over the Zoom meeting, but they, they could definitely email the city and get, get answers to the questions we already have. Uh, you know, looking at, you know, just estimating that cost, I don't, if that's effective enough, um, I don't see why you couldn't do that for, let's ballpark it, let's go high, and say five thousand dollars, right? Uh, I, I would bet you could probably do it somewhere in the fifteen hundred easily, two thousand, that's with the laptop, um, you know, to set up the Zoom and, and connect to, to the camera. I know a lot of residents want to see that. That makes it a lot easier for a lot of the residents who are not as mobile, uh, and, and, and other people who are busy, right? People have families, this is the time they want to have dinner. They can just log in, watch the meeting. We can save it to where somebody could download it to watch it tomorrow. I mean, that's what, what you do, and I, I watch a lot of the meetings. And, uh, yeah, we can do any. So that's kind of my, I, I would like to see it done. I know a lot of people want it happening, so, um, yeah, sorry to be so long.
Councilman Miller.
Um, I think that the community is being served by the unofficial sites. There are two of them. I've seen two different sites. Um, the Linden leader, I think Jean-Claude is the primary editor and videographer. I don't think something like that is out of question. I mean, if, I mean, I've looked at them, and they're correct. They've got the right timestamps on them. They're not, you know, they're not clipped, they're not edited. So I think it's as simple as that. If our community is being served already by this particular site, why wouldn't we just support that? Uh, easy enough. Maybe if you're going to put some money for it, a hundred dollars a meeting for the person, you know, doing the videography. Something like that. Just, it's very simple. I agree, Jerry, it's simple. It should be a simple, a simple solution. Well, when you're talking about, when you're talking about, um, setting up, um, a break big, and I know exactly what Ellen's talking about, and I've done it because I worked at Ford and we did that. Equipped rooms like that are outrageously priced. So, you know, if everybody's being served, I mean, isn't that what we're after? We want to make sure everybody's served, people can see what the meeting was about. Um, what is it, as simple as having Jean-Claude do it for, I don't know, fifty bucks a meeting or something? I don't know what it should be, but, and then put the link on our site.
Jean-Claude, Pat.
Which is great. One point that I don't know the answer to, but it suggests so. If the city takes part in creating these videos, whether it's by paying someone a hundred dollars to do a buy-in on equipment, those videos become a public record, and they're record-keeping responsibilities. If I'm out in the audience, taking a video, a whole different story. The, the city's not doing it.
Yep.
So I think it may be, maybe a little harder than just, let's have a, a, a fleet of cell phone residents.
Then I would say, then I would say if our citizens are being served, then where, where, where we need to be. I haven't heard any complaints since we started recording, or the two people here started recording. Have you, Madam Mayor, have you heard any complaints?
Not the answer.
Okay. Have you, as a city, heard any complaints or asked for additional videos or? Okay, I personally have. Okay.
Do you have any further questions?
No, I think we're okay.
Thank you. All right. Councilman Miller.
Okay, I have been asking for this for quite a while, since I was out door knocking and talking to people, which I do a lot. Um, this is very, um, important to some people that they have a spouse at home that is a veteran, and they don't need the home. Um, they don't want to wait for the day after to maybe try to get into a YouTube, or they don't partake in YouTube's, and they'd rather just watch it on Zoom. Um, this was suggested to me from a few people. Um, a permanent place, we don't even have a time frame for that, um, for these meetings. I would love to see all the meetings, DDA, planning, all of it to be in this building, if possible, and have it, so it's just, I don't believe it's that, um, expensive as far as keeping the data. Um, I know that we do the M and L. I've been on Zoom calls from, I've cast a employer. Um, and I think it's something that a lot of the people want, and that's what I've been hearing. They'd like to get this done. And, but frustrate them, and probably me too, is the fact that we don't have, if this could be three years before we have a permanent place, there's nothing down the pipe where this will go. So I think it's important that our residents in Linden has the ability to, um, not search YouTube, that they can go in and watch us live while we're doing this on Zoom. And I agree with Jerry not to have, you know, comic, comments and, um, back and forth through the comment section, but I, I truly believe this is what we need. Thank you.
You don't want to talk to the wire? After the time.
Victor?
Yeah.
Pat, the, you were saying that you paid somebody, and that was public, what did you call it, a public?
I said it would become a public record.
Public record.
I, I, was it not my studied opinion? But I can tell you.
Understand, which is a good point, though. Would the Zoom be considered a public record also? Because there's nobody really changing money or anything like that.
I don't know the answer to that. I know that there was a variety of temporary changes to the old meeting that would enter into COVID period that allowed meetings to be less than like we are now, people physically in the same room, we're meeting, and not being able to, so I don't know whether that would affect the issue of us keeping video records or meetings or not. I'm not sure that it would, but it could something I think, take a look at.
If, if, could that be something that we, we investigate more?
Yeah, sure.
Absolutely. I'm good, thank you. I just had one question.
Okay. All right, so I do believe that there are municipalities around us.
Madam Mayor, do you have your microphone on?
I do, but it doesn't have a work on, as I said, on top of it. I'll, I'll attempt that to make. Um, so I do believe other municipalities, um, actually do use Zoom, um, to get it to the public. So I would like to, I, I definitely would like that researched as well, please, because I believe some that are very close to us use it. Um, I know at the beginning of this year, um, there were conversations, um, in regards with PEG grant funding, and I remember asking whether or not you could put some of it away in this current that we just took care of, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget. Um, did we do that?
So our PEG funding is earmarked very specifically. That can't be just used to, um, make up any general fund. So it is separately, um, and I, and you guys all seen, um, where we were at with our last PEG funding request for the schools. So we have franchise fees that are separate that can be used in any manner, and we have PEG funding as well, so.
So the, the reason I ask is because if we, um, I, I, I had a conversation a couple of days ago with two different, um, individuals that have assured me that they can, in fact, even for between ten and fifteen thousand dollars, start us a system, um, that is buildable, uh, a buildable system, that as we move and grow, it can move with us, and we can expand yearly or all at one time, however we want to do that. But between ten and fifteen thousand, um, dollars. So that's why I was asking, because it's my understanding with the PEG grant funding, that if we can put it on the cable, government cable channel, then we can, in fact, use that money to purchase equipment. And so that, that was why I asked that, because we had had that conversation in the winter.
Yep, and as I had stated before, we, as long as we're creating content to go on the public education channel, we can utilize those fundings. Platinum chips balance in, um, uh, August of twenty-twenty-four for PEG funding, uh, was approximately a hundred and fifty thousand. Ours is roughly two to forty thousand. So it's a big difference, right? And so it's very difficult to compare us to another municipality like that, and the funding mechanisms or the funding amounts are significantly different. So I don't begin to consider myself a tech savvy person whatsoever. I'll leave that to a professional. But we are, we're more than happy to get, uh, any quotes and things like that. We did, um, with, when we were trying to get the system here, um, when we were changing over to meetings here and not knowing what was going to be happening down the road. Um, again, that was roughly sixty thousand dollars. Um, what was that, just upgrading? Yeah. Um, and, and to the Zoom point, Zoom is, is something that is a public record and is viable. Um, it is a paid service. If we, um, we have to subscribe to, um, Zoom on a monthly basis, uh, when we were doing that previously, because in order to be able to get the amount of time that you would need, um, it's a subscription service, so, you know, meaning goes three hours or whatever, we'd have the ability to do that and stuff, so. Um, so those are all things for us to, to discuss. Um, so if, if that's something that you all would like to prioritize, and it's not, like we talked about when we had the session back February, um, the budget had already been adopted for the year, we don't have a budget for it. But something that we would have, that's, I thought, my understanding was something that we would want to work towards with the next budget and, and have that, you know, budgeted to moving forward and have that, have that in place for the next budget. That's something you guys would all like us to do, and start seeking out, uh, potential solutions and, and soliciting for additional bids. We can certainly do that. It's going to just be difficult, like I said, with the locations. There's a lot of things that, again, again, it's not just as simple as grab a cell phone and put it on a tripod and create this Zoom. There's a lot of things that go into it. We are required to, like I said, to make maybe accessibility with it, and there's storage. We just got to go back for cloud storage right now for our new server, a thousand dollars a month, twelve thousand dollars a year. I don't even know what type of storage we're going to need to house.
A lot.
The meetings, you know, and, and the retention schedules, so. Apologize.
I haven't gotten to finish my statement, but go ahead.
Are you finished?
No, I wasn't.
All right.
I, I, no, it's fine. I'd already gotten interrupted, so go ahead.
Um, so I agree, I, my, Tom asked my question. Um, and, uh, Ellen is right. The meetings would, if you're having the meetings and they're for the public, they have to be, um, kept according to the guidelines, right? So there are guidelines, and they do take up a lot of space. So I think that would be really difficult and expensive. But I think, um, you're correct again, we, we did not include this in. you're correct again. We, we did not include this in this year's budget. So, maybe we can talk about that next year. Let's put that on our, um, list for next year, what we're gonna go ahead and investigate and look at. I mean, we don't have, obviously, we don't have all the, the elements we need here. We don't have all the questions answered. And we don't know what the best thing to do would be, so that's gonna take some time to figure out. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to get some answers. Okay, if we, what the, what do we cost? When do we start the budget for the twenty-six? It's, what I hear is that we don't have a permanent place. We won't have a permanent place till I don't know when. So, this is my problem, is that the community is asking for this. Um, and they want this as a Zoom. Is, can we do it? Give me numbers, give me times? Because for me, just keep telling the public, well, I don't know, we don't have a permanent place, is not the answer they want here. Especially you got your homebound people, um, veterans that are sitting behind a computer and they don't get out. And they don't want to jumble through YouTube to do it. And I have to say thank you to both these people that have been diligent about always being here. Because this, what they've done is really good. We didn't have this before. So, I don't think there's any problem with asking when, how much, where, something, so we can start in that direction. Um, going forward. Thank you.
Jerry?
And, you know, um, to answer your question, Brenda, yes, I have heard people say that, and like Denise, um, when we were out door knocking and even prior to that, uh, we were out getting the dish and sign.
Was that before you came to council?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so, um.
And, and if I could finish?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, uh, I feel that, you know, people have said that, they said that then. I've heard people say that since then, um, that they would like to see that. Um, again, I, I would like to see options, not necessarily an option to turn the whole facility over and upgrade the, the entire server or anything that needs to be upgraded here. But something as simple as what I mentioned, you know, you've got a multi-directional microphone. It's made for conference rooms to pick up audio, probably better than what the cell phone microphones are. Um, a video camera, and you could probably even use an existing, uh, computer, excuse me, or even if you purchase another one. Yes, there is the, the storage issues, and I think if we could ask the, you know, the city attorneys to look in, you know, what, what do we have to follow in order to, you know, abide by the Open, Open Meetings Act and, and have that stored? And, and like Denise said, I'd like to see numbers, um, numbers for the chief option, right? The temporary mobile option that's, uh, movable from facility to the facility or any meeting. Uh, wouldn't take, you know, what I'm referring to, and I've talked to IT individuals. You set it here, you turn it on, you push record or, or play on the, the microphone or on the, uh, the, uh, video recorder. It's hooked up to the computer. I don't think it would take a lot of extra time for setting up, and it's something that people want. And if the people want it, like Denise said, that's what we're here for, so.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I take a comment after you're done?
Yes. So, when I, um, brought up local municipalities, um, while I'm understanding that they do, in fact, get their money, it's just the fact that they use Zoom. And, and to, to go to the point of whether or not we could use Zoom in a meeting. That was why I actually had referenced that without calling them out by name. Um, I do wish that there had been conversations, um, in this current budget, um, to get, I, I thought that there were, but I do wish that those conversations had, you know, been more included. Um, so, hopefully in this next year, we can do that. Pam?
All I'd like to say is that we, if we're gonna do this, we gotta make sure that's in the budget and that it's something we can afford, because there's so many costs that are coming down the road that might just not be able to support something like this. And we don't have a permanent location, but, uh, it just boils down to budget. If we don't have the money, we don't have the money. Maybe there's a grant out there or something we could try to get. But I, I mean, I honestly think we gotta consider the budget right now, it isn't allowed for, and that we can think about this for next year.
Is there any further counsel questions?
One last thing. I could get Warren's investigation.
So, is there? Is there a consensus that we want to bring it back? What? I think there needs to be language given, and exactly how.
Okay, all right.
May I, um, add one? Can I just add a few things in this session?
Who, who, I can't hear you.
I'm just gonna add a few more things in this session. So, there are, uh, there's a lot more to it than just a cell phone. I'm just speaking respectfully. Um, I just agree with the amount that I broke into it and I researched. So, um, you would have to consider additional public notice, which means additional newspaper publication costs to make it out there and everyone know that it's available. So, we, these are just things we have to include, we have to consider. Um, additionally, closed captioning, so everything would have to be, um, recorded and with automated captions, um, and then reviewed and corrected for accuracy prior to going to posting. Uh, various excessive, it's like accessible formats. Videos would have to be posted on platforms that support screen readers and keyboard navigation. Um, a certain amount of consideration would need to be taken in, um, for the type of document that we are using. So, for instance, you know, Adobe or PowerPoint, there'd be some additional steps, um, and things to adjust regarding that. Um, additionally, audio quality, transcription, so the audio would have to be cleared. Um, we would definitely need more than just a, a conference call, um, setup. They would just, movies like phones don't pick up every much where it's clearly, so we'd have to just be a little bit more involved in that. Additionally, uh, we have to consider sign language interpretation, was another thing that I saw. Um, and then, of course, the stack trading and setting up, recording, editing, posting. Uh, one thing that I would definitely feel comfortable with is having someone from the American Disability Association or a more local contact come out and perform an audit, and I know I would feel comfortable leading this process, but I have a training. Um, I just don't want to do anything, or do anything wrong, obviously. Um, and I've learned a lot about the, um, this process. So, we've been working on upgrading our, um, just our computers to Windows eleven and considering new, uh, new server and all the things. And I just, the cost is astounding. Um, and I learned that they would require additional IT help and support for staff, um, and for this. So, it would, it may be additional security measures, um, antivirus, additional device equipment setup, so that would all need to be taken into consideration as well, and a lot of these costs would be recurring. So, if we, if we were to find a grant for this, it would be great if it was something that would be consistent on the community basis. Um, but I just wanted to add, that was just a little bit of research that I did, and just things that I just wanted to put out there for us to consider and go looking to.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um, so I think the attorney needs to look into all of these, if we, I know personally, I go to MML, MML classes on the computer, and I've never seen closed answering, and I've never seen assigned on this person. So, yeah, I'm just, that's for my, in many Zooms, so I've never seen that. Um, and they put out a lot of information. So, I think that the attorney could find out all these, all this information, what we have to have just for Zoom meeting, um, for the public. Um, that would be wonderful for our next meeting. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, to the, to the point of MML, it, um, MML is not a, under the same, I guess,
requirement.
Requirements that the city has. They're not, they're not, um, say that again.
Not a government.
So, you're taking training online, that's vastly different than us recording, um, as a public body to put that out there. So, it, it, it is different, um, in comparison. And, and yes, those are all things that we can, we can certainly do, and as Chris explained, we have been, we have been researching this to be able to have the answers for you guys in line for the next budget. It takes time, right? So, so respectfully, this isn't something that we just haven't been working on. We've been trying to get answers for you, um, and trying to do that. And when we left that session with Lou back in February, when we prior were, as I said, we knew that that was something that we were gonna have to have answers for in the next budget year. When we discussed that, uh, you know, you guys came in in December, had our session with Lou in February, we knew it was gonna take some time to kind of get answers to those pieces. So, it is something that we are working on. Um, it just, this is different than what was the expectation when we had that session, so.
Madam Mayor?
No, I can tell this person, is that?
I, I just did a quick little, uh, Playmate's a very beautiful setup with their city councils. And what they're doing is they're putting it on YouTube, live streaming, and it's a big, a little, a time to click on. It's Cora quote, "When I asked about financing the channel, Don Hugh noted that as a, as a minimal in theater, there is no charge to broadcast on YouTube using a recently upgraded, we've got more upgraded audiovisual equipment in the city. Click Council chairs." So, that may be something, another tool that we need to look at. Because they're saying, because we are an entity, that we can use their, their system for free, but we have to have upgraded audiovision.
Counselor.
Um, I spoke to Lou, because I didn't really remember having that conversation about, um, recordings. Um, and he said he didn't remember having that conversation either. Um, so if we can bring that back to see, you know, where that was. Um, I think there's lots of possibilities we can do in this budget year, in as soon as possible, if we can, to get this at least moving. So, as council, um, when I hear, well, we don't have a permanent place, that frustrates me is because I can't tell people next year, the year from next, that we don't have a permanent place. So, I just want, the only thing I want is to be able to move forward towards this. Nothing more. And I know it's, I know it's very hard, person, to do everything you're doing, because you are just like all of us. You want the best for our citizens. And I know it's a large thing to put on you and Ellen and all those involved. I just want to take it started, and that's the only thing I was asking for, to have a, um, time, place, and discussion. Thank you very much.
Well, finally. I do want to say, what Denise said, brought it up, thank you for investigating, spending the time and, and looking into something that was requested by the, by the council, this is brought up. So, it is appreciated and, uh, you know, I.
Appreciate that. We just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page, because I'm looking at Lou's previous session.
And I think next month, I don't know how long it would take, you did, you know, you investigated, but I, I think this gets a moveable tone, so, but thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, one last thing to, um, if you're, if you look at the notes from February, eighteen twenty-five, that, um, we sent out, uh, under goals, it says, "Adapt facilities plan, explore shared services, explore streaming meetings, streaming meetings, and explore legal review and update of board consensus." So, that was back in the February one, and I apologize that I was, meaning it was the one that we had more recently with Lou and stuff. So, so, it goes back to February, and a lot's happened between November and so. But we're, we're working on it. Let's try to bring back some, some more, um, answers for you all.
Madam Mayor, one last thing I have promised I'm gonna do. Ellen, I would like to thank you, because just, you know, so in February, that would be a year that we, that we waited. So, as long as I have a time, date, um, budget, that would be great. And thank you for everything, bringing that back, because I knew it wasn't this August, so, all right, thank you.
Up next is L O C advisory committee.
So, yes, um, Madam Mayor and City Council, this has been a discussion item that, uh, that's been brought up at several pre-cha meetings. And the mayor and the council, we just had a conversation about it, um, at this meeting. So, Tessa is here today with us, a junior partner, which is a regional, some of the things that we've been working on, uh, to try to get, um, the structure of it. One thing that we gotta remember is that the structure of LOCE has changed. The corporation is still up. The structure of LOCE is now a department of the city of Linden. Tessa is that respective department head. And when we talk about an advisory board, we also have to be careful as well, because our charter is very clear on how we structure advisory boards. They're usually put in place for one specific reason and for a short period of time. When we started discussing this, this was more an advisory board for Tessa to be able to, uh, run her department, um, and also expand the footprint of, of, of LOCE and work with our, uh, neighbors uh, to make sure that it stays an, an inclusive, you know, and doesn't become a Linden-centric. So, so that's where our thought process is with the advisory board, and this is a tool and a resource for Tessa to be able to utilize and the overall, um, actions and, and just day-to-day programming and things like that of LOCE. Um, ultimately, City Council is the board. You are the board that governs LOCE Senior Center. So, this advisory board would be something that would be more flexible, um, and that Tessa would, that Tessa would work directly with them um, to then, uh, you know, plan, uh, future programming or what's working, what's not working, what can we do differently, things like that, right? So, again, allowing her that flexibility to set this up and then bring that information back to you all as a board, because ultimately, this is her department, and she, just like any other department, um, you know, has, has the ability to, um, run it, you know, in the most effective manner, and then bring, any of that information would come back to the City Council, your decisions that would be made. So, especially if there's funding, you know, funding recommendations, programming recommendations, anything like that. The other piece of this is Southern Lakes, um, as we continue to, uh, that relationship has also passed. If, if, I mean, when we do have an advisory role, that they just be a part of that. Um, and so, Tessa's been working with, uh, Southern Lakes, uh, very closely, and I think that that relationship is, uh, has significantly improved just overall with the operations of the center and things like that. We're continuing to work on stuff as far as collaboration with, um, you know, expanding their footprint as well, um, as far as like shared senior service programming and stuff, and us taking stuff to, um, over to Fenton to the community center, things of that nature. So, so this board really ultimately would be a tool and a mechanism for Tessa to be able to use in her daily role, um, to gain some just very constructive feedback from individuals, um, and not add another layer of, of government and structure. We, we gotta be careful, we don't want to mimic or, or try to put something back in place that we already had decided was not effective. So, that's, that's where we're at, and just wanted to, to bring that.
Do any of the residents have any questions on the Losco?
When I suggested this committee in the first place, my idea was to have people in this committee who participate actively in the center. Because the employees are not senior citizens. I have only seen a few of the council members, the city council members at LOCE activities. And I think you need input from people who are here frequently and find out what they want for their programming, what's working for them, what is important.
Thank you. Any other? Seeing none, okay. Counselor.
Well, I agree with you, Ellen. I think that it needs to go through Tessa. Tessa, this is your baby here. I think the, um, way I seen it was, um, set up is that you would have somebody from Linden, Lake, Lake Haven? That's in town. In township, um, our time, so the Genesee County. I think that'd be a great idea. You, you know, I come in here and I see the same seniors a lot, and I think they just want a little input, you know? And you always hear the input. So, I think we just have a little board that, you know, um, however you design it, I think it's, it's gonna be a good thing. And with Southern Lakes, I think that's a good thing. So, the way you just mentioned, Ellen, I think that that would be good, but I think they are looking to have. But I think they are looking to have it done as soon as possible, if we can set that up. That's what the seniors, when I come in, that's what they're telling me. Um, and they enjoy this place. I can tell you, there's no disappointed people in here. They love LOSI and they love all the new things they're getting. So that was my input. Thank you.
No, I think it's a good thing. Um, there's a lot of, I've seen here, I've lived here a lot of years, I've seen a lot of improvements since the changeover. And I think this will give you more tools in your toolbox to, well, take it into the next steps, up the ladder. So, yeah.
Councilwoman, how?
I, I think, uh, LOSI, LOSI Advisory Committee for Tessa, if that's needed for our work, would be a good thing. Um, just to get ideas of programming, just as a help and a tool to Tessa. Because I mean, we have a different set of circumstances now than we did several years ago. Now that it's a department with the city, it's a different, it's a different thing. But I still think, you know, it's good to have, it's good to have that involvement and with the community and it's good to have their thoughts on what needs or what you think should be done.
Yeah, I think an advisory committee, not to direct you and tell you how to do your job, but to get the input, I think, uh, you know, I agree that the people on these boards or the information you get, because you could also do questionnaires from, you know, the people that come here. But I think whoever's involved with it should be someone who has skin in the game, you know? Uh, as far as, you know, you know, the different groups that are, that help and assist. Yeah, I think those would be the people that, that should be questioned. But this is yours, you're to run, you run it and if it goes well, you know, and it is going well. Um, I know originally when there was, uh, the transition, I heard a lot of both sides, pro-city, anti-city. But now I'm hearing a lot, I don't hear the anti-city. Uh, maybe I'm not talking to the right people, but I haven't heard. So that means we're going in the right direction because I've heard a lot of, prior to that, that there was a lot of concerns. But I think the, the committee to assist and like, hey, this is what the individuals that come here, this is what they want to do. That's, you know, I mean, that's, that's your call, make your own decision. So, but I just think if we've got any, any advisory committee that has any authority, I think, you know, it needs to be made up of individuals with skin in the game.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Hi, yes, um, so the documentation that you gave to us, it is a very nice summary of the expectations that Southern Lakes Parks and Rec has. As a commissioner, I can say they're in total agreement. The only thing to change on this document is that Southern Lakes Parks and Rec Board would choose the person to put on the, um, LOSI Center Advisory Group. So I, as you've got it ordered here, I like it very much and that's, that makes a lot of sense. Um, you got a representative from Fenton Township, City of Fenton, Argentine, City of London, and Southern Lakes Parks and Rec. So you have five people and then they would advise, um, Tessa. So, uh, I think the structure is nice and I think that the intent is, is pure. And I think because, um, Southern Lakes Parks and Rec is working on their agreement right now with London and we added some incentives in there for new programming. And I think this would really support that. Um, but understanding that our, as you stated, Ellen, this is our director's job to do this and the people would work with Tessa. And Tessa would be the person coming to, um, to the council to bring the information to us, right? Just like we do with any other group.
Any other.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Tessa, for all your hard work over there. It's, or here, right? I brought this because I've had a lot of questions, um, asked of me and I did not want to, even wanted to answer said questions because I didn't know where we were in the process. Um, do you have any thoughts on where you are in the process? Just so that that way they can be recorded and answered, so that residents can have some ideas.
Yeah, so this is where we're at. This is how private we're done. Um, just to kind of bring it out, um, this is like Ellen said, this is for expanding your business partnerships, um, what they want to see, if you want longer hours, whatever. It's more of like, come have your ideas ready. This is what we're presenting right now and this is what we're going with.
Just wanted to hear it verbally.
I'm just adding that too. This is, this is Tessa's brainstorm and, and adoptment, right? So that's something internal that her and the event working in, right? So, so it wants to allow her some flexibility to change and, and, and be flexible with that more if things are not working. You know, she has the ability to, to change things up. Uh, and to, to, uh, Miss Dees's point earlier, that's exactly what we want. We do want people that are active here, but there also are, when we conducted a survey, we also learned that there's a twenty-year age gap between our mission statement and what we're actually capturing here. So we want to figure out how do we get those people in the center, right? So we want to make sure that we're hitting those, those seniors that are not necessarily coming here. So what do we need to do differently, right? Um, so, so that's our other goal with this board as well, to not just limit us to, we want to attract people too, so we can keep the center, you know, vibrant and lively and things like that. So, um, that's what, that's our thought process and stuff and we'll continue to keep people updated and, and stuff on that. And then also to clarify too, we're not looking, um, to, to, Tessa's going to look at finding a member or someone that is in the Fenton Township area and work with our neighbors to be like, you know what? Are you guys good with that, to appoint this person to the board because we feel like they have a value, uh, and their background is X, right? So want to try to have a diverse group that we can come together and, and understanding obviously Southern Lakes Parks and Rec has, um, a financial commitment to the center. Um, it sounds like it's, uh, it's, I don't think it's final with the board yet, but it sounds like it's moving in a very positive direction. Um, and to our other partners, um, and our neighbors, um, you know, we've been able to partner with Fenton Township, um, on our C D beach project, renovation project, which is huge and stuff like that. Um, again, us trying to expand the LOSI's footprint, you know, um, to the community center and just offering some things over there with bookkeeping on it. You know, things like that. So those are, those are items that we really want to kind of continue with, with this board. So appreciate you guys' feedback and.
Are there any further questions? Seeing none, the managers have taken.
Just a couple of things today. Thank you all for, uh, being here today. We started the day off with a really great ceremony, historic, uh, for sure. We understand those, that you could not join us, but, uh, it was, it was a great way to start things off. And I really appreciate Kristen and Ellen who did to make that ceremony successful today, um, and everybody involved. But, um, the groundbreaking ceremony for the medal was, was beautiful and it was great. So appreciate you all, um, for your contributions to that, I think, especially Kristen for, for getting, making it all happen today. So, um, and, uh, again, not to, once a project is done, to, and do a ribbon cutting ceremony as well. So again, that'll, that'll be something that we'll be able to celebrate as well. Um, I, I sent out an update last week, uh, planning commission, uh, approved, uh, at the public hearing for the zoning limits and so that'll be forthcoming to you guys. Tessa and I have been able to engage with MTA. Um, I have had to have a meeting to go to tomorrow, uh, to finalize some conversations. But MTA is all in and wanting to expand their footprint into the city of London, so, yes. So we're bringing more information back on that. Um, uh, the renovations are going, go back here. I see they got the grid in for the ceiling. They're doing drywall repairs. They've already started on the bathrooms and stuff back here for the entrance area. It's encouraging to see, you know, um, something that's, that can happen for a very, very long time. At our last meeting, uh, they, they really did, they chucked off a bunch of stuff. They approved expanding electrical across the dam to, um, hopefully be able to host a Christmas tree conference? Yeah, I should even put it out there. But they want to hold a Christmas tree, um, or lighting or decorating contest this year. Fencing as well, um, so just really kind of completing that area down there as well, um, for, um, a pilgrimage to see Golden Park. Um, we're, we're going to finalize our audit, should be coming back to you guys for presentation in November. Um, I got a number of committees that's coming up.
Do any residents have any questions? Council? Any questions?
Thank you, Ellen. Also, sorry, the same works to school, notice it's tomorrow. It's informationally announced, it'll be open with those affected by the project, so.
Moving on to council comments and reports. Councilwoman. I think I've said enough tonight. Thank you, everyone.
Councilwoman. Um, just a, just a couple of things. Um, I want everybody to know and I hope you've heard it before, but would you please take a piece of cake and enjoy it? I have bought a birthday cake for somebody here, but we didn't, um, we figured on it was a, because this is a Tuesday night, that we were going to be at another place. So anyway, my, oopsie, please have cake. Let them eat cake, yay! Um, I, okay, so, I also want to mention that, um, a lot of state employees have to have, have had to go through and will be going through again FEMA-based community emergency response, um, training. But the, but it brings up the question is, I think we should have the same thing here, uh, community emergency response. It's involving the citizens in community training, not just cities, not just churches, not just businesses, not just, um, restaurants and whatever, but everybody. And we all have a, should have a place at that safety table. There's a lot of good positives about this training that it makes the citizens, it helps the citizens to feel more secure knowing that they themselves are trained to handle emergencies, not just, you know, like the community. Um, because, I mean, a lot of businesses here, they don't, uh, many of the business owners live there, but some do not. So they take that training home with them, but it's not useful here because they're not here. I think we should have citizen neighborhood captains. I, I think it's enough because people like me, I live on Silver Lake Road. I can easily tell a lot of people is coming down the road and so can Brenda. But, you know, the more eyes, the more people trained to handle emergencies, the better off you'll be. You never know the next time you're going to be at the grocery store or anything. Times are so unsettling with the Latter Day Saints thing. That church was only a couple of miles from the church I attend. And I know we've gone into this mode of community-based training. I think it's a good idea. I think we'll all sleep better than we that are trained and can handle emergencies.
It's a good point that you brought up, the Latter Day Saints Church, because there was a great response to that.
Yes.
And it was handled by professionals to do that job as well. If we would add a group of citizens there, it was an active shooter situation. So, you know, that is sometimes leads to those problems. We don't want anyone to get hurt. And I've been doing this for forty years, forty years? And all, yeah, no. And, 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 let me finish. And, and so the response, I've seen temples built, I've seen floods, I've seen explosions. The response from this, from countywide has been fantastic. We have trained individuals to do those things so people can.
Right, but I can't see, I can see where having citizen involvement and FEMA recognizes that is a good thing. I think we should look into at least someone.
I understand that, but again, it's a staffing issue as well. I mean, a lot of those communities that have that, have many, many employees staffed and they have a civilian staff to do that. We don't have that.
Right. And there's, there's probably more people like me in this community where we're trained to handle emergency response. I mean, can't hurt to reach out to some of these people, coworkers that live nearby. We're all like community response trained in different things, nuclear power disasters, like I am on a radio active response team from Michigan. If something happens in one of the plants, I have to go call and field. It's, but I'm just telling you, you should take advantage of all those people. They can't hurt us. Um, and then the final thing is, please mark your calendars for October twenty seventh, from one thirty to three thirty, for the radon awareness and environmental health fair that'll take place here at LOSI Senior Center. And the flyers and the packets, um, and I'll happily give you some if you need it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have one thing to say. It was a great morning. Just one, it's a, it's one, it was a great morning. Um, afternoon. Madam Mayor, Ellen, uh, you guys did a beautiful presentation. It was very nice and I'm just very proud of you part of it. And look forward to seeing the progress and then going to the ribbon cutting. Down the road, so it's very proud of you. Thank you.
I did owe everything you said. I, uh, today was great. Um, everybody that was involved, I was, I was thrilled. The sun was out, the people were out. Um, and I can't wait, I can ride every single day down Fitler Street and lots of progress. And even I can shut it. Uh, but thank you. Monica, um, I would like to thank you for the, um, the boards that are out, the poster boards. It's, I went all the way out to Argentine, all over the place and I see these. Thank you and thank you American Legion for everything you guys are doing. Um, and I think that's it. Thank you.
So Southern Lakes Parks and Rec is still, um, searching for a director. We're doing, um, interviews, so we're hoping to have, um, that position filled by the end of the year. And also I just had a question about the collections here at the corner. Um, I, I thought, of course, we've been wrong. I thought that we were not, um, letting people collect on the north side. I watched a girl show from Scott Kid the other day, someone coming around that corner coming door. So could we remind our folks that are collecting at that intersection, at the north side, you know, is not the usual?
It was actually written, um, into their application, so it's an agreement, the applicant signs it. Okay. By libel insurance, they are, they are told whether they should, so, I, if anyone can, this is Justin's word.
How do we handle it, right?
So if you, if you, I would suggest, why don't you just send me an email, who was, and I'll contact them.
Okay. Easy. Thank you. That's it.
I have just, very briefly, today was absolutely beautiful. The weather was, you couldn't have asked for better. And I really am so appreciative of the staff, my fellow council members, all those that made today possible. Driving down the road this morning after dropping my kids off in there was T P W. So thank you guys, please. Hard at work loading the chairs up, so that that way everyone would have a place to sit today. It, it couldn't have gone better and I'm very, very excited to see the project, the completion of the project, and the library and the museum back in and the possibilities for the other boards. So I'm, I'm very excited about the future of it now. With that, um, we do have a closed session. So we need to say what it's for.
You need to have a motion to discuss privileged communication.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, before we talk, can we release the students if they were?
I, I would, as soon as.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I make the motion for, uh, to move to a closed session.
To a closed session. Simon?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Yes.
All students can come on up and, um, their homework's done.